Right, may I call speed in order. First item is rule call.
Alderman Bass.
Here.
Alderman Cleaver.
Here.
Alderman Headley.
Here.
Alderman Stratton.
Here.
Alderman Totten.
Here.
Alderman West.
Here.
Next time the limitation led by Jason Williams of Fall County Community Church. Followed by the pledge of allegiance to Alderman Bass.
Let's pray, Father, we thank you now for the opportunity to be here tonight and be able to lead this community, God, in the direction that you have for us, God, and pray for our city leaders, God, that you would bless them and their families, God, and we just pray that, God, in all things we would seek to honor you. God, your word says that righteousness exalts the nation, and, God, we thank you that, Lord, we have leaders that are leading in that direction, leading in a way that would honor and please you in everything that they do. So, Lord, we just pray for wisdom, God, strength, courage, and the ability to do the things that would be right before you, even in the face of adversity and opposition. Lord, we just thank you that your wisdom, God, will lead them, direct them, God, we thank you for that. Now, Lord, bless everything that goes on tonight, God, we give you praise for it in Jesus' name. Amen.
By the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the United Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, next time is approval of the agenda.
No changes, Mr. Mayor.
All right, seeing no proclamations, move on to citizens' participation. We ask the citizens who wish to address the board, come forward to the podium and microphone. Give your name and address for the record. Do you have anyone who wishes to address the board to TV?
Seeing none, then move on to the constituent agenda.
There, I move that we accept the constituent agenda.
I have motion, Alvin West for the constituent agenda, drive a second.
Second.
Second, Alvin Totten.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye. All both same sign.
Seeing no previous business, new business or presentations, move on to public hearings. Uh, first public hearing is medical marijuana facilities, conditional uses, and zoning.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, uh, we have been working, um, along with Mr. Laubert's firm to come up with, uh, conditional uses and zoning for the upcoming changes, uh, based off of the referendum that allows for medical marijuana. Accordingly, I'm gonna let, uh, Mr. Trozen kinda go over the, the topic, give you, uh, some discussion points about it, and then we will open up, uh, the public hearing for the public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Um, the language that's before you is to address the zoning for medical marijuana facilities within the, uh, city limits of Green Valley. Um, as you recall, at the August 12th meeting, the Board of Alderman adopted an ordinance in order to conform to the provisions of the Missouri Constitution regarding the medical marijuana facilities. Um, we also then began work on looking at addressing these facilities in accordance to our zoning regulations. So, the ordinance before you, um, considers commingating allowing medical marijuana facilities in certain zoning districts by conditional use permit. There are five types of medical marijuana facilities defined by the state constitution. They are dispensary, cultivation, infused products manufacturing, testing, and transportation. A dispensary facility as a conditional use may be located in District CB, Control Business, C1, Central Business, C2, General Business, C3, Highway Commercial, and the Downtown Overlay District. The cultivation facility as a conditional use may be located in District S, Agricultural, M1, Light Industrial, M2, Heavy Industrial, and IP, Industrial Park. A medical marijuana infused products manufacturing facility, again, as a conditional use, may be located in Districts M1, Light Industrial, M2, Heavy Industrial, and IP, Industrial Park. And then finally, a testing facility or a transportation facility as a conditional use may be located in Districts R-P, Research Park, M1, Light Industrial, M2, Heavy Industrial, and IP, Industrial Park. Now, with all the conditional use permit applications for a medical marijuana facility, the applicant will need to provide a site plan, compliance with all city-adopted building codes, an odor plan, a security plan, a waste disposal plan, and a signage plan. So, as was adopted in the previous ordinance, no medical marijuana facility shall be located closer than seven hundred fifty feet of any then-existing elementary or secondary school, daycare, or church. The ordinance before you defines how that distance is determined between the facility and any then-existing elementary or secondary school, daycare, or church. Measurements are made along the shortest path between the demarcation points that can be lawfully traveled by foot. The measurement requirement is from the state regulations. Also, a medical marijuana facility cannot be located closer than five hundred feet from any other medical marijuana facility, except when the facilities share common ownership. The hours of operation for a dispensary facility was regulated in the previously adopted city's general ordinance. Dispensary facilities shall not be open to the public or make any sales between the hours of eight PM and eight AM. The ordinance also acknowledges the state regulations pertaining to residential medical marijuana cultivation. A public notice was given in the examiner. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing during their meeting on August fourteenth. A copy of their, uh, minutes, which have not been approved but are enclosed as a part of your packet, the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, passed a resolution recommending these changes to the Board of Alderman. Staff also recommends approval of these proposed amendment changes.
Thank you, Mr. Trozen. Any questions from you, Mr. Mayor, or the board?
Any questions or discussion? Okay, as it is a public hearing, we will open, uh, open up for a public comment either for or against the proposed, uh, changes. Do you have anyone who wishes to speak regarding this? Seeing none, closed public hearing. Uh, second public hearing we have is tax levy for two thousand nineteen.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, um, as you recall, we've talked about the tax levy several times. Uh, this is the annual public hearing that we're required to have for the, uh, two sets of the tax levy. Uh, accordingly, I'm gonna let, uh, Mr. Craig go over the, uh, final numbers that staff is recommending, uh, based off of the discussions that we've had through the last few meetings.
Uh, so this evening, we're considering the twenty nineteen proposed property tax levy. If you remember, in twenty eighteen, the board chose to lower the levy ten cents, and this trend is continuing with an additional three cent decrease this year. Uh, the recommended rates are, um, included in the board packet. Um, they were also published in the examiner, uh, as required by law. Um, the total levy will be, um, one dollar, um, one point five nine nine four, and that, like I said, decreases the overall levy three cents as compared with last year. Um, if you do remember, the city saw an assessed valuation increase of seventeen point nine percent, and the impact of that increase has been previously discussed at the last two meetings in August. With this debt levy, we're taking the necessary steps to, uh, set it, to, um, also provide some of the funding for the no-tax increase bond question, um, in April twenty twenty. Um, that'll be considered, um, some of the other items this evening will be discussed, um, and considered later on in the meeting. Uh, we also have representatives from Baker Tilly here, um, who have been advising and assisting the city with, uh, this year's property tax. They verified the calculations and, um, examined the numbers and also analyzed the funding scenarios for, um, the property tax levy this year.
Any questions from the mayor?
Anyone have any questions, comments regarding the proposed levy? As it is a public hearing, we'll open it up for, uh, public to disc- to discuss either being for or against the proposed, uh, levy for two thousand nineteen. Do you have anyone who wishes to speak?
Well, can I say something?
Hmm?
My house, I had called at, uh, three seventeen, has now raised, that raised up to nine hundred dollars, more than what it was, and that's only a one-bedroom house. I called the, uh, the county, and we've not heard nothing back, and I have been persistent, and I'm a little upset with them, but they're almost higher than some of the nicer houses I went to. So, I'm not happy with it.
Well, that's not us.
I know. That's one bunch that has called me, too.
Seeing no one else, we'll close public hearing. We'll move on to ordinances.
Mayor, I move, I move we make the second reading by title only for Bill B nineteen dash twenty-three.
I have motion, Alvin Headley, to make the reading of Bill B nineteen dash twenty-three for the second reading. Do I have a second?
Second. Second, Alvin Stratton. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, this is just the second read that pertains to the Public Health Section, uh, two fifteen, um, and it defines the, uh, new use and exceptions of the controlled, the controlled substance with, uh, to be consistent with the Missouri State statute.
Any additional discussion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye. All both same sign.
Okay. This is, uh, Bill number B nineteen dash twenty-three, um, it would become ordinance number twenty-four seventy-five. This is an ordinance amending Chapter two fifteen, sections forty, forty-five, fifty, fifty-five, sixty, seventy-six, seventy-seven, seventy-eight, and seventy-nine controlled substances.
Mayor, I move we accept the second reading of Bill B nineteen dash twenty-three, making it ordinance number twenty-four seventy-five.
I have motion, Alvin Headley, to accept Bill B nineteen dash twenty-three for its second reading, making it ordinance twenty-four seventy-five. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alvin West. Any discussion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye. All both same sign.
It will be a foot voice vote. Alvin Stratton.
Yes.
Alvin Totten.
I want to choose to roll that.
Alvin Bass.
Yes.
Alvin Headley.
Yes.
Alvin West.
Yes.
Alvin Cleaver.
Yes.
Passes.
Mayor, I move we make the first reading by title only of Bill B nineteen dash twenty-four.
I have motion, Alvin Headley, to, uh, for the first reading of, uh, Bill B nineteen dash twenty-four. Do I have a second?
Stratton. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, this is, uh, actually the topic that Mr. Trozen just spoke about in the public hearing. Uh, I'm sure that you all remember, uh, what he shared ten minutes ago, so I'm not gonna make him repeat it again, uh, but if you do have any additional questions, please feel free to ask.
Do you have any questions or discussion?
Only question I have at this time, is, has anyone approached the city to do any of this stuff that we're talking about relative to, uh, facilities?
But we wouldn't know necessarily until they got their permits, right?
Correct. I mean, there has been, uh, the mayor and I, um, met with one group, and we have heard from two others.
I'll go on a limb, I saw the guy that we met with at the fair, and he was asking about all, uh, passing all this, I kinda got the assumption that maybe he, I know he's been there for life, 'cause I kinda got the assumption that maybe the license is for here, but I don't think we would know that until...
Yeah, I mean, anybody that's reached out to us, we just told them the process we were going through and kinda gave them a timeframe on what it was, so there wasn't really any need for them to, uh, you know, really communicate with us or let us know one way or the other.
I don't think they really expected to hear anything for a while from the state, so...
Do we have a limited number of permits that we can...
Yeah, so it's not gonna be us that limits it, but, um, it's limited per the state, and it's through, um, what is it, each district, basically?
Congressional district, yeah.
And so, like with us, we'll have...
Something per district, or...
At least for dispensaries, it's gonna be going for licenses for congressional districts. The others don't have similar limitations for congressional districts, because they have a limitation on the number to the whole state.
Everyone is, two people that talked to me were both for growth facilities. No one, as far as I know, has reached out about looking for a dispensary, so...
Any questions or discussion?
Seeing none, all fair, please say aye. All both same sign.
Can you hear me okay? Okay, but, uh, this is Bill B nineteen dash twenty-four, an ordinance amending Title Four of the Code of Ordinances to include a new chapter addressing medical marijuana facilities and Section four hundred point two four zero, conditional uses, to be amended to include a new subsection regarding medical marijuana facilities.
Mayor, I move we accept the first reading of Bill B nineteen dash twenty-four and bring it back for its second reading by title only.
I have motion, Alvin Headley, to approve Bill B nineteen dash twenty-four for its first reading, bring it back by Title Four for its second reading. Do I have a second? Alvin Cleaver. Any discussion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye. All both same sign.
Do we have an ordinance number for this one? Do you have an ordinance number for...
That is, that's just the first reading, so...
Oh, okay, sorry.
Move on to the next one now, does that one pass the six oh, first reading?
Oh, okay, I apologize.
Mayor, I move we make the first reading by title only for Bill B nineteen dash twenty-five.
I have motion, Alvin Headley, to bring forth Bill B nineteen dash twenty-five for its first reading. Do I have a second? Cleaver. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, this is the, uh, annual tax levy ordinance that we just discussed in the public hearing, uh, section. Uh, it does, uh, cover, or it does see a decrease of three cents, uh, between the general municipal government operations, the retirement of general, general obligation debt, park maintenance, and public health. Uh, if you have any additional questions, Mr. Craig can answer them.
Questions or discussion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye. All both same sign.
This is, uh, Bill B nineteen dash twenty-five, an ordinance to establish the City of Green Valley, Missouri's annual tax levies for the two thousand nineteen calendar year for general municipal government operations, the retirement of general obligation debt, park maintenance, and public health purposes.
Mayor, I move we accept the first reading of Bill B nineteen dash twenty-five and bring it back for its second reading by title only.
I have motion, Alvin Headley, to approve Bill B nineteen dash twenty-five for its first reading, bring it back by Title Four for its second reading. Do I have a second? Alvin West. Any discussion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye. All both same sign.
Passes six zero.
Mayor, I move we make the first reading by title only for Bill nineteen dash twenty-six.
I have motion, Alvin Headley, to make the first reading of Bill B nineteen dash twenty-six. Uh, second. Second.
Second, Alvin Bass.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, um, as you know, one of the key items, uh, as to our tax levy, or our twenty nineteen tax levy, is, uh, being able to pay off additional tax, uh, debt service early. Uh, and accordingly, this is the ordinance that approves the escrow fund, uh, to pay that, uh, debt service off in future, in a future year. Um, we've had, uh, multiple discussions with Baker Tilly. Uh, Mr. Calico's here tonight to, to, uh, all, an- answer any questions, and I'm gonna let, uh, Stephen, if you would, just give a, uh, quick overview of, of the ordinance and the action we're taking with this.
Uh, sure. Mr. Calico, uh, from Baker Tilly is here this evening to, uh, discuss the ordinance and escrow agreement that is included in the board packet. The documents were drafted by the city's bond council from Gilmore and Bell. Uh, it will obligate approximately one point two million dollars from the Debt Service Reserve Fund that will be used to pay the Series two thousand eleven general obligation bonds that will mature between March first, uh, two thousand twenty-nine and March first, two thousand thirty-one. Um, I believe as Mr. Calico and representatives from his firm have previously discussed, this funding will, um, this action will help provide the funding for the no-increase, uh, tax bond issue question in April twenty twenty, and he's here to answer any questions if you have, um, anything of him, uh, this evening. Did you have anything else to add, Tom, or any questions?
You handled it quite nicely.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions? Seeing none, and all fair, please say aye. All both same sign.
All right, this is, uh, Bill B nineteen dash twenty-six, an ordinance authorizing the escrow of funds sufficient to pay a portion of the outstanding general obligation bond, series, uh, two thousand eleven of the City of Green Valley, Missouri, and authorizing certain documents and other actions.
Mayor, I move we accept the first reading for Bill B nineteen dash twenty-six, bring it back for its second reading by title only.
I have motion, Alvin Headley, to approve Bill B nineteen dash twenty-six for its first reading, bring it back by Title Four for its second read. Do I have a second? Second, Alvin Bass. Any discussion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye. All both same sign.
Passes six zero.
The only other thing I'd mention is I believe we'll probably bring back a budget amendment at a future date for this, um, transaction that will be taking place.
Next up, we have resolutions.
Mayor, I move we accept Resolution nineteen dash thirty-nine as read.
I have motion, Alvin Headley, to approve Resolution R nineteen dash thirty-nine. Do I have a second? Second. Alvin West. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, and all this is, uh, well, it's significant considering our form of government, but it's just a reappointment of Lynn Baron and Steve Shadow to the Board of Zoning Adjustments for a five-year term. Uh, if you have any questions, you can direct them to, uh, Mr. Trozen.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye. All both same sign.
This is, uh, Resolution R nineteen dash thirty-nine, a resolution by the Board of Alderman of the City of Green Valley, Missouri, reappointing Lynn Baron and Steve Shadow to the Board of Zoning Adjustment for a five-year term.
Okay. We're good.
You're good, that's approved.
Okay, it's approved, all right.
It's approved based off of your reading, correct?
Yeah.
Ah, chilling his rules. We're doing really good.
We were.
We're getting better.
We are, actually.
You are. Probably take it a six months, I wonder, but...
All right, next up, city attorney's report.
I have another need to report.
We'll let y'all at this time. All right, next up, city minister of staff report.
Uh, we'll start with Ms. Ozenbaugh.
Um, I just wanted to give a quick update on the Green Valley Community Campus project. So, if you were at the fair this weekend, um, you may have seen that SAP and Helix, our architect firm, um, group was at the fair, they were presenting the three, um, potential master plan schemes that we have been working with as a committee. Um, hopefully, you've all had a chance to see those, um, if not, feel free to reach out. Um, unfortunately, the fair turned out to not be the best place to get public opinion.
Yeah, people's opinions when they want porn dogs and...
Yes.
And ice cream, so...
I think they only talked to maybe a dozen people, and they were out there most of Saturday, um, so we, and, and we were planning this anyway, but for sure, we'll be looking at some other types of community meetings coming up in the, the near future towards the end of this month or early in October, um, where we'll present those three plans, and the goal would be to get the opinion, to start narrowing it down to the one plan that we can then build into our, um, master plan for that campus downtown.
Uh, Mr. Davies.
Uh, Mayor, board, uh, the pool season wrapped up, uh, this past Tuesday night, uh, with our, our dog paddles day, um, with the opportunity for residents to bring their canines to the pool, uh, for a swim. I think we had close to sixty, uh, dogs, uh, in attendance, uh, which was nice, um, but the pool season has concluded, it was a little rough to start the season with the rain and the cooler weather, um, I think revenues were down a little bit this year, but, uh, with weather like that, it means we're either not open or, or closing late, uh, uh, or opening late or closing early, so usually if there's a dip in revenue, there's also a dip in expenditure, so that we both kind of balance, uh, each other out. Um, and then one other thing, the Blue Branch Creek Trail, um, they started laying asphalt, uh, on it this past Friday, and hopefully, if the weather cooperates, uh, it will be completed, uh, later this week.
Ms. Logan.
I just wanted to share that, um, the Whiskey Tango in town did announce their new name, which is Mo Country, or they're rebranding, they did that at the fair as well, but they did submit, um, officially with the city of the name change. That's it.
And then I would like to just draw your attention to the paper copy that Mr. Trozen gave in lieu of an oral report, um, his report is as written. Uh, no further staff reports, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Next up is Board of Alderman's reports and comments. Alderman Stratton.
I do have something this time. Um, I wanted to say a special thank you to you, Mayor, and your wife, um, for all the work that you guys put into the fair. Um, I was there a little bit more this year, so I see a little bit more than what I've seen in years past, and it's impressive, and I'm thankful for that. Um, also to the city staff that also put in the work, I know I saw Ryan and, um, Jerry out there, but I know you guys never work alone either, so thank you to you guys and everybody that was supporting you, um, to the bit, um, for the many volunteer hours that they put into the five K run, the parade, and the fair, and a special thank you to their secretary, um, Cindy Bell, who coordinated so much with, um, Sergeant Stratton and the mayor to make sure that all that ran smoothly. And then I told Daryl I would give an update from the Burger Barn, and just, um, if you guys don't know, the funding for the Burger Barn goes to help, uh, Green Valley students attend camps and retreats and mission trips. Um, we sold over, we sold a thousand burgers, as well as chips and waters, and the net profit is estimated to be about five thousand dollars this year, um, one of our better years, um, he said that we're regretful that we ran out so early, but very grateful for the overwhelming support. We did run out earlier than we've ever run out, or what, this is like five thirty or six o'clock on Saturday night, so usually we're there till ten, ten thirty. We'll order more next year.
Alvin Totten.
Yes, I'd like to bring up, uh, something. Miss Mayor, I'd like to make a motion requesting staff and legal counsel work together to prepare an ordinance amending Chapter four hundred to establish a procedure for vaca- vacation of the right of way and easement. Although there is interest in the citizens to request platted right-of-ways for alleys that do not contain paved services, be vacated and shared by adjoining property owners, there is currently no process or procedure in place within the city code of ordinance. I understand that this will need to be reviewed first in the public hearing forum by Planning and Zoning Commission, which is the commission will then forward a recommendation to the Board of Alderman. What is going on is I have, uh, four houses, two, uh, houses, uh, have this lippen, it's a four-foot sto- across the street, never used, always been taken care of by the people, the city has not touched one aisle of it, and, uh, they would like to get it to add to their property for one, a driveway, and I'm not sure with the other, but, uh, it is because we need the second two houses... And I'm not sure what the other, but, uh, it is, because we needed the second two houses, and God bless, I'm one of them. But, uh, we thought it was taken care of by Mayor Darius Halton, lied to me and said it was. Found out when Aaron's mother went to get a fence, it had not been taken care of. Her house is on the property line, and this would give them the part, and then mine would give me my driveway. And, uh, this is why we're trying to get this into play.
So, basically, let's, let's see staff review the...
Yeah, based off of her request, um, that we a motion, and essentially we need a second, and a, a voice vote just to direct staff to, uh, direct resources into that effort. Is that accurate?
Do I have a second then?
Second.
Alvin Bass? Any discussion?
You're welcome to come down the street and I'll black shoot to them.
Are, are, I mean, do we know, is this the only area we have this? This, is there gonna be a lot of, is other parks in town too, or...
Yeah, I mean, in a lot of the older parts of town, you know, the way it's set up to start with, there were, you know, ride of ways provided for future roads, or it was a road a source of on the side, and now, and on a lot of those, we don't even have any tillings. Uh, there is also one for, um, we need us real hard, we, um, we had a request for...
What I was just thinking about, that's, that would, that would take care of that situation as well.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? All in favor of the direction staff to look into this, uh, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Right? Is all you got?
Well, I'd also like to say thank you to the public works fellas for coming over and bringing me three bags of cans from the, uh, up here for the, uh, for the, uh, alcohol cans.
I was gonna tell ya, I had more. Somebody stole them.
I believe you. This is why I want my stuff.
Because I, because I would say, okay, I've seen those cans from all where for Nancy, and I'm like, uh, where'd these cans go? I don't know if maybe they got them in the trash, because I had all the bag, I had, I had at least four more bags.
Oh, wow.
So I don't know what happened to them.
Well, I'm gonna tell you something that I, I have not shared with anyone, but my great-grandson, he's thirteen, looks about eight or nine, he has had, uh, a lot of surgeries and that, and I am so grateful to Ronald McDonald House that I have helped them, because, uh, he, they had to airlift him out of safety, stomach is all cut, but they've had new kidney, new liver and everything, and I am so grateful for that, but, uh, I'm, I'm very thankful for everybody that is working so hard, and the Food Pantry loves you too. Now, I do give some to Blue Springs Food Pantry, because they serve it to Green Valley people, but I give the majority here. So, thank you.
Alvin Bass?
Uh, I have nothing.
All right, Alvin Taddy?
I just want to mirror Alvin Stratton's comments, you know, a lot of recognition to, and thank yous go out to everyone involved in the fair, and, you know, including you and your wife, Mike. Uh, there's, I can't imagine the work and effort that you guys put in and, and the, the, the police, uh, and everyone behind the scenes that make it look, make it look easy, so, much appreciated.
Alvin Bass?
I'd hate to ask this, so, what happened to the fireworks?
This is my wife's face of fight. So, apparently, our company's license expired on September first, and they have not been able to get their renewal from the ATF, is what we were told. So they did not have a license and thus could not prove that they had insurance to us. So, that's what happened. And I knew they, I mean, it's big time, I mean, they were trying up till, I mean, the last minute, so, kinda thought, you know, typically what happens is they'll give, they'll get, they'll get an extension letter. I guess they didn't get that this time or something, so I don't know all the logistics, but, uh, we, they weren't able to prove insurance and all that, so we couldn't do it, so... So that's what happened.
Everything else is wonderful.
Except for phone cakes.
The weather...
Except for a lot of phone cakes.
And French ones.
Because the phone cake should have flipped on the way here.
Oh, no.
They wouldn't pass inspection.
That's not true.
Huh? I know, man, I didn't realize phone cakes were so popular at fair until that moment. So, thank you. Alvin Cleaver?
Nothing at this time.
All right, next up, uh, mayor's report. Uh, first off, uh, we said we had, we got a, a card back from, uh, the family of, uh, First Lady of Blue Springs, uh, you know, Parsons Ross, his wife passed away recently, so we sent something from the city, so we got, um, appreciation card back to them for that, so I wanted to show that to everyone. And then, uh, next thing, and I echo everybody, I mean, we can't, you know, you know, Pos and I put a lot of work into it, but, I mean, we couldn't do it without everybody, I mean... Everybody here at some point has, you know, helped out with it, I mean, police department, this, ton, you know, parks, you know, Jerry does a lot, you know, I, I keep teasing him that he's gonna take his vacation, that he's gonna look, see when the fair is, start taking his vacation, and... Uh...
He does better.
Alvin, he does that. I mean, park guys, you know, they do a ton, uh, public works, you know, barricades and all that, you know, they, they help out, and I'm always, you know, calling, asking for something that seems like, you know, uh, you know, Jamie helped out a ton, trees again, Ryan was there. Ryan, he gets quite hurt as I did, but he got a little bruise.
Because I used Etoroid, man, on my face when I got home, yep.
But, you know, Stacy was there a lot, you know, Bob was there, I mean, I saw you long distance, I think everyone, saw everybody. Uh, I don't know, it's just great, you know, I mean, this year, just to give you, uh, I, I don't, I, I wish we could tell how many people were in attendance, but there's, there's really no way, but I know that from last year, the carnival was up about four times. Their business is what they were in the previous year. So, uh, I know the Beer Garden, they ran really low on lots of stuff and sold out of a couple things, so, you know, they were a lot busier. I mean, Burger Barn ran out before six o'clock, so, I mean, there are a lot of people there and a lot of, I mean, a lot of people, the great thing really, I mean, not straight for Grand Valley, but we draw a lot of people into town, so, I mean, if you were to look at the roster on the five K, the people who run the five K, I bet only ten, fifteen percent of those people have Grand Valley addresses. I mean, we had people with Lawrence addresses, uh, people with Topeka addresses coming to run the five K. That's probably their only experience ever with, with Green Valley. We get a lot of, oh, man, this is a really nice town, this is, you know, this is a nice little fair. Got several comments this year that people liked ours better than like Santa Claus on dates, because, you know, ours is more family-friendly and easier to get around, and, you know, just, you know, they feel like it's, you know, better to take a family here in Santa Claus on dates, so that's what I like to hear, you know, whatever gonna be the biggest fault, but it's Santa Claus on dates, so we like the year that people enjoy coming to ours more, so, uh...
I have a question. Why did the carnival leave here late on Sunday night? Actually, they were leaving at ten thirty.
They usually leave, usually by the time we get back over there Sunday morning, we always get back over Sunday morning to kinda clean up a little bit. Uh, we got back with about ten AM. Usually, they're almost all gone by ten AM on Sunday morning. I think that storm that rolled in Sa- Saturday night slowed them down, because usually they're almost always packed up and out there by, they stay up all night to pack up, because they go to their next, next event. Pretty much, they have events, you know, starting in May till now. I think their last event is Liberty, they told me is Liberty in a couple weeks, and then they're done for the season. But there's only about four or five carnival companies in Missouri that operate, and they're all, I mean, they're booked solid every weekend throughout the entire summer, so... It's like, it's pretty much, once you get into the contract of a carnival company, that's, that's who you're with unless you're going, willing to, to switch your date to something else, because, like, I, you know, I don't think there's any other carnival company to do our date, to tell you the truth, so... So, yeah, they pack, pick up, pack up as quick as they can to get out, because they actually show up here, and they start showing up Labor, Labor Day, I say, and they start rolling Monday, so, and they don't, soon as they're done, they're done, they're out, so... They don't stick around, so... I have a second, right?
Uh, other than the...
Other than the phone cake, the ass though...
Phone cake, uh, five K was red hot. I mean, it was smoking.
Yeah, it was smoking, yeah. Uh, see what else, I, I could, yeah. Pray, do, how many, how many entries end up having the parade, do we know? They were over sixty, weren't they? I'd say, they had it. So, the, I mean, that helped us out, I mean, these guys, we used to do the parade and everything too. The Vips took all that over this year and did that. That helped us out a ton with them doing it, and I know, I think it was probably more work than they thought they were getting into, but I appreciate everything.
Yeah, I think, you know, they're, they're busy, uh, uh, it's not like this one today.
Yeah. So, I appreciate, makes sure you pass that along to them, that we appreciate all they did, so... That's all I have, unless anyone has, anything else? All right, if not, we will adjourn.